The Columbus City Council Meeting for November sixth, two thousand twenty-three will now come to order in compliance with the Open Meeting Act Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-four dash fourteen oh seven. A current copy of this act is posted in the meeting room. Madam Assistant Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Freshhour.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling. Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you, Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to speak to the council and general public, we'd ask you please come forward. We'd ask that you give your name, address, and then we'd also ask that you comment only on items on the agenda and limit those comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. Item four B, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and councilor, is there anything you would like removed?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. We do have a special presentation, but we're not going to read our proclamation this evening. We're just going to send it to the group. No one is here to take it. It's a proclamation honoring those volunteers that go the extra mile, and we have many of those in our community. All right. Go on to reports of city offices.
Item nine A, update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation, twenty-third Street Reconstruction Project.
So, the contractor's doing really, really well. He, they have poured the last, I'll call it the major pour, you know, with the paving machine here this last week. So now they're doing a lot of the hand stuff, so it'll be like the returns and the intersections and things like that. So it is on their schedule that they have, and so I think you're gonna see a lot more intersections open up. Hopefully, in the next day or two, we'll have Third Avenue back open, which... A big transition. Very better. It's a big transition, you know, so that'll be really nice to get that back open and operational. But I guess the bottom line is, is they're on their schedule.
Any comments from Mr. Bulghus? All right, we'll move on to new business.
Item thirteen A, League of Association of Risk Management's election of Mayor James Bulkeley to their Board of Directors for a three-year term effective January first, two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the League of Association of Risk Management's election of Mayor James Bulkeley as member of the Board of Directors be approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen B, appointment of Theodore Ted Vaughn and Calvin Novak as firefighter EMT paramedic hazmat techs.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Theodore Vaughn for conditional appointment to the position of firefighter EMT paramedic hazmat tech, subject to successful completion of all pre-employment requirements. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of paid firefighter. Mr. Vaughn was certified for firefighter EMT paramedic hazmat tech by the Civil Service Commission at their meeting held July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Ted Vaughn is a graduate of Osceola High School and has an Associate's of Applied Science in Advanced Manufacturing Techniques from Central Community College. Ted holds certifications in firefighter one, hazmat operations, emergency vehicle operations, and is a nationally registered EMT. He's also a Nebraska Arborist Association certified arborist and is an independent contractor who runs his own business. Mr. Vaughn has been serving as a reserve firefighter EMT for the Columbus Fire Department since two thousand twenty-two. He is currently employed as a lead technician with Vichay Dale in Columbus, Nebraska. And since these are together, do I read both of them together then? All right. And with your permission, the mayor would also like to submit the name of Calvin Novak for conditional appointment to the position of firefighter EMT paramedic hazmat tech, subject to successful completion of all pre-employment requirements. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of paid firefighter. Mr. Novak was certified for firefighter EMT paramedic hazmat tech by the Civil Service Commission at their meeting held July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Calvin Novak is a graduate of Osceola High School. He studied health sciences at Central Community College, where he received his national registry EMT. Calvin holds certifications in firefighter one, hazmat operations, and emergency vehicle operations. Mr. Novak has been serving as a reserve firefighter EMT since two thousand twenty-one. He is currently employed as pasta flush operator at BD Medical. Sorry, I probably really killed that, but I apologize. Anyway, we need a motion to approve these two appointments, please.
We have a motion and a second to approve these two appointments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. We have our two newly appointed individuals in the audience. Would you please come forward and introduce yourselves to your council? That'd be you.
Arguing about who goes first.
Good evening, my name's Calvin Novak. I've been a firefighter for Columbus going on three years now. I started out as a volunteer, made our way to a reserve, and now I'm looking at continuing on as a full-time career. I had those certifications listed, as well as firefighter two, which I just recently received, and I'm in a fire officer one class as we speak. I'm excited to continue going on and continuing my education and serving for the city of Columbus.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thanks, Calvin.
Good evening, I'm Ted Vaughn. I've been with the department for coming up on two years. In addition to the certifications listed, I have firefighter two. I appreciate this opportunity. I look forward to continuing my education and service with the Columbus Fire Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item thirteen C is the strategic plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four, or excuse me, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-eight for the fire department.
All right, would Fire Chief Gray please come forward and answer any questions or comments that any council members may have? I know you've all had this document for a week or two to be able to look it over.
Yep, and I do have a little speech prepared. I know I have a lot on the agenda, so I'm gonna keep it brief. First and foremost, I'd like to thank and recognize the members of the Strategic Planning Committee for their commitment to this process and all the hours they poured into it. They wouldn't, this would not be possible without them. To my knowledge, this is the first ever published strategic plan for the Columbus Fire Department. This speaks volumes to the commitment of our members to making improvements within our department. As you are all aware, the fire department has made quite a few significant changes over the past year and a half. Not all of them been easy or taken lightly, but we are committed now more than ever to continue change in the hopes of improving service delivery, our administrative functions, and overall department efficiency and effectiveness. This document outline outlines the goals and objectives of the Columbus Fire Department for the next five fiscal years. To establish this plan, a department-wide SWAT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, was conducted. This allowed all of our members of the department, regardless of rank, status, or time, to voice their opinions on where we are currently and where they think we should go from here. From that list, the Strategic Planning Committee established overall goals for the department, then assigned objectives to each goal. There are many items listed in this plan, and all of them will require the department's personnel's full commitment to achieve. The objectives have been assigned a fiscal year in which we want to see them achieved. We found ourselves overloading certain fiscal years with projects, so we made a concerted effort to spread them as evenly as possible in order to not become overloaded with any task in any one fiscal year. Additionally, we formulated a department motto compassionate, faithful, and dedicated, CFD. We also came up with a mission and vision statement. Our mission statement is our commitment lies in safeguarding lives and property through fire protection, emergency medical services, and community education. We will uphold this commitment through professionalism, responsibility, and the utmost proficiency. Our vision statement, to emerge as a community-centric department driven by inclusivity, transparency, and innovation, while delivering swift, efficient, and proficient emergency responses. Our ambition is to establish an exemplary standard for combination fire departments across the state of Nebraska. Our core values, service, professionalism, integrity, respect, innovation, and trust. We believe the motto, mission, and vision statement and core values will provide department personnel with a beacon to always guide them down the path that we're expected to travel. We are very excited to present this to you tonight for consideration to be adopted. One thing I want to point out and be clear is that by adopting this plan, you are not committing to funding any of the projects listed in it. These projects that require funding will be brought forth for consideration at the appropriate time and in adherence with the city's purchasing policy. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions for Chief Gray? I want to commend you on an excellent layout of a plan and a vision, because that's exactly what it is, a vision. And, you know, put some meat and potatoes to it to see if we can get where we need to go.
Thank you.
So we will work hard to get with your goal.
We'll do our best.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Don't go far away, you've got a lot of things on this agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the strategic plan for the fire department be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen D, quote from Sirius Computer Solutions LLC, in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and eleven cents for renewal of software maintenance agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Sirius Computer Solutions LLC for renewal of maintenance agreement be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept this quote. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen E, quote from Danko Emergency Equipment, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand dollars for twenty-five sets of turnout gear for the fire department. This is CIP number two zero dash two-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the quote from Danko Emergency Equipment for the amount of one hundred and four thousand for twenty-five sets of turnout gear.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Danko Emergency Equipment for twenty-five sets of turnout gear. And I remind everyone, this is part of the budget that was approved this, this past fiscal year. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Passed. Sorry.
Item thirteen F, quote from Great Plains Uniforms LLC, in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for uniforms for the fire department. This is CIP number two four dash one-one.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Great Plains Uniforms LLC for uniforms to be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Great Plains Uniform for uniforms. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen G, quote from Danko Emergency Equipment, in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred dollars for forty pairs of boots for the fire department. This is CIP number two zero dash two-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Danko Emergency Equipment. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Forty pairs of boots and only twenty-five uniforms.
So, in the contract that you all will be voting on tonight with the, the local, we are outfitting our career staff with what's called hybrid gear. It's in order to reduce exposure to the carcinogens that are in our structural turnout gear. Part of that ensemble is a pair of technical rescue boots, but this is also to replace some outdated boots that we have in circulation right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen H, quote from Motorplex of Norfolk, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars for UTV with snow blade for the airport, CIP number two four dash two-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Motorplex of Norfolk for a UTV be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Motorplex of Norfolk for UTV snow blade. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen I, quote from LMEC Incorporated, in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars for bulk water fill station for the water department. This is CIP number two four dash three-six.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Altech Incorporated for bulk water fill station be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from LMEC in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars for a bulk water fill station. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Could we have an explanation of what this bulk water fill station is, what it will do, and how it will benefit the city?
We sure can.
This bulk water station will be located at a central maintenance facility. We have currently a makeshift unit there. The card reader's bad in it, and we're going by the honor system currently as contractors come in to fill up. Anything from bore unit tanks, three hundred gallons, to semi-loads. So, they're supposed to come in and mark it down if they get it. As best our knowledge, we're getting most of them, but this will be available twenty-four seven. It'll be a card reader or a cash unit. It'll be available three hundred and sixty-five days a year as a contractor need them to come in and fill bulk water. And we'll probably do anywhere from five to twelve thousand gallons a day in the summer. With all the boring contractors going on, now we've got several overlay projects going on for dust control. They're taking two, three semi-loads a day out, so. And it's all backflow assessed, so it's, it's just the safety of the system, and it's just a better accounting for the water being sold.
Where, where will the unit be located?
Central maintenance facility out at, on Nineteenth Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen J, quote from Master Tech Truck and Equipment, in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for reversible snow plow for the street department, CIP number two four dash two-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from Master Tech Truck and Equipment for a snow plow be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Master Tech Truck and Equipment. Any discussion? Other than I have to ask, what is a reversible snow plow?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Typically, most of our snow plows are one-way plows. This would be basically a two-way plow that they can move it and throw snow on either side of, the driver's side or passenger's side, which will be really useful as on the parkway, so we can clean it better and more efficiently than having to come around against traffic or things of that nature. The old plow will be moved down into the older fleet, and one of our plows that are in pretty bad shape will just be sold off.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to accept. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen K, quote from Custom Body Company, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for a used two thousand thirteen bucket truck for the street department. This is CIP number two four dash two-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from Custom Body Company for a used bucket truck be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Custom Body Company for a used bucket truck. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen L, quote from Midwest Petroleum Equipment, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for state mandated, mandated upgrades to the gas pumps located at the park maintenance facility, CIP number two four dash six.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Midwest Petroleum Equipment for state mandated upgrades to the gas pumps be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Midwest Petroleum Equipment for the state mandated upgrades. Any discussion?
Could we explain some of these state update, state mandated updates?
Yeah, the fire marshal, they come and inspect every year, and this year, our tanks, some of the outside rims were rusted. The concrete was broken, so we had to replace that. We had to upgrade our hoses and our nozzles. And we also had to upgrade our shut-off system, so we're working, that was, so everything that they put on the report, that's what we put out for bid.
Thank you.
Would it be safe to say, Doug, these would be similar items that anybody that owns a filling station would have to do from time to time?
Yep.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen M, quote from Gene Steffi Ford LLC, in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and seven dollars with a four thousand dollar trade-in value for a total of seventeen thousand two hundred and seven dollars for a vehicle for the police department, CIP number two one dash eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Gene Steffi Ford LLC for a vehicle be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Gene Steffi Ford. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Several people ask me, they drive by the police station, and they see a large number of vehicles always parked there all the time. So we're needing another vehicle to park there? Can you help me with that one?
I can address that. This is a undercover vehicle that'll be used by our undercover investigators. We're gonna trade off a vehicle that has a hundred and fifteen thousand miles and is starting to cost us money to maintain. So, these vehicles are driven every day to and from their home. They, they take them home and stuff.
Just what the public's asking, they want to know why those, they see so many cars always parked.
Well, we have a primary fleet and a secondary fleet. As you know, vehicles break down, and we have a lot of vehicles that break down. They're, they're running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, when a vehicle goes down, we have to have a vehicle to put an officer in. So we have a secondary fleet, and the way we rotate that is we have our primary fleet with the newer vehicles, and then our secondary fleet is vehicles that were primary vehicles that have been rotated into secondary vehicles. And then we take those secondary vehicles that we have, and we make them into training cars, or we give them to other departments to utilize, so.
Perfect, thank you. That's a good explanation.
Captain, I would assume that as soon as you could get to full staff, about half of those cars sitting in there would be on the road, correct?
Uh, if we get to full staff, when we get to full staff, which we will get to full staff, we'll have an additional, uh, three cars that'll be on the road constantly. So, yeah, some of those other cars are parked because we just don't have the manpower to put in them yet.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen N, quote for laptops for the city council and committee meetings. We had a request from a council member to look at larger screens. So the original was for fourteen-inch screens, but there's now an addition, this is very loud, to the memo that's for a little bit larger screen. So this additional memo is for a fifteen point six inch screen. The previous, or the original, was ten thousand two hundred, I believe. The second is around eleven thousand...
Eleven thousand five hundred and six.
Five hundred, eleven thousand five hundred and six. So it's really the council's discretion on which one to go with.
Well, I can speak to this. I, I'm the one that asked for a second quote on it. It just, I recall we were talking one time replacing these and going to a larger screen, so it was a little easier to see the content in front of us. You know, for twelve hundred dollars more. I think it's probably valid, these last, what do we, what do we use these, four, five, six years?
Five years is the typical replacement cycle. And we do the budgeted... And we do, the budgeted line item is seventeen thousand, so we do have it available to get the larger screens.
Any other comments or discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the quote from Applied Connective for the laptops to be accepted.
Applied Connective is not the larger screens.
No, they are.
It's ProVantage.
It's on the backside.
Sorry, it's ProVantage.
Second?
We.
You ready?
We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from ProVant, Pro?
Vantage.
Vantage, in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and six dollars. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item thirteen O is comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
I would start with any comments from council members. The mayor has no comments and would yield the floor to Councilwoman Augustine Schulte.
I just have one comment tonight. On Friday, December eighth, my husband and I will have the opportunity to close on a new home, which we're very excited about, but very sad about because it is not in Ward One. So I will have to step down from my position as a council member for Ward One. And so my last meeting for city council, to serve on the city council, will be our last meeting in November. So, November twentieth, so. Thank you all for.
What ward are you going to? Or don't you know?
No, it's wardless. It's outside the city limits, so.
Something we can annex.
I hope not.
Get that rumor started.
You would have to annex a river along with it, so a couple rivers, but.
Well, Beth, we are sorry, we will be sorry to see you go come the twentieth. Lots of accolades, I'm sure, between now and then, so. And we wish you and your husband the best in the move.
Thank you. It's been an amazing experience, I can say that. I'm often asked, did you have anything in mind when you started the council? Did you have anything on your slate that you wanted to address? And my comment is usually, I didn't even have a slate. So I definitely came on as an uninformed citizen. And I learned a lot of great things about our city. And I'm just so extremely grateful for the opportunity that I have been able to serve our Columbus in this capacity. We just really have an amazing community and an amazing city staff. And even some of the elected officials are kind of all right to work with, too, so. Anyway, thank you.
All right, we will move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R two three dash one four two, approving the agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska Medical Center for forensic and crime lab testing services.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R two three dash one four two be adopted.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one four two. Any discussion?
How many, how much do we use this?
Captain Mulchek's gonna come up with a question.
Well, this is not church, you can sit close to the front if you'd like.
I gotta watch everybody. We use this quite a bit, actually.
Okay.
Every time we arrest somebody with marijuana, we have to do a purity testing on it if it's going to be prosecuted because they're of the change in the hemp and marijuana laws. So we do utilize it quite a bit.
Thank you.
I wish I had numbers, but I don't have numbers, sorry.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two three dash one four three, approving signing and buyout agreement with police officer candidate Brittany D. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-three dash one four three.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash one four three. Would you just give a little background for the community? Because when we're talking about resigning and buyouts, I think it can confuse people. We just need to have everybody understand it.
I can, or you can?
Or you can, that would be fine. Thank you, Captain.
Is that your exercise program?
Yep, gotta get my steps in today. Brittany Warren, who's sitting back here in the audience, was offered a position with the Columbus Police Department. She's already a certified officer with Colfax County. And part of her condition of employment with Colfax County was that she served X amount of years under a contract. When we offered her the position, they required her to buy out the contract to the tune of nine thousand one hundred and twenty-six, sixty-seven dollars. Nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So in order to relieve some financial burden on Brittany, we consulted with the finance director and the city administrator in the HR department and came up with an agreement where she would waive her five thousand dollar sign-on bonus and then agree to work with us for three years as a condition to pay off the extra four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars that she would owe the city.
Excellent. Any other, any questions?
Would she be paying it back or? Paying it back or waiving it after, if she stays?
If she, if you read the contract, it delineates out that if she leaves between the end of her probationary period and the end of the last two years, she'd have to pay back a prorated position of four thousand one hundred and, four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. If she terminates during her probationary year for any reason, then she would have to pay back the full nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is our?
Yep, she's here and we'll have her up.
Is the candidate here?
Yes, she is.
I'd like to meet her.
Well, I thought we'd approve her first and then we'd have her come forward.
That's fine.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brittany Warren is in the audience. Would you please come forward and introduce yourself to the council and our community?
Yes, good evening. My name is Brittany Warren. As he said, I have been an active member, serving Colfax County as a sheriff's deputy for the last almost two years now. But I've been living in Columbus for twelve years and I'm looking forward to serving the community of Columbus.
Thank you.
We're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. I hate to say it, but Colfax County's loss is our gain.
Definitely.
Item fourteen C, resolution number R two three dash one four four, approving the memorandum of understanding with Polk County, Nebraska for K-9 unit assistance.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R two three dash one four four.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash one one four. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen D, resolution number R two three dash one four five, awarding the bid with Stay Built Construction Company in the amount of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and forty-seven cents for Armor Coat Surfacing Improvements two thousand twenty-four. This is Gerard Park and Centennial Park parking lots.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R twenty-three dash one four five be adopted.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two three dash one four five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen E, resolution number R two three dash one four six, approving the agreement with the Columbus Volunteer Fire Department Legacy to transfer ownership of two antique fire trucks.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R twenty-three one dash one four six be approved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash one four six. Chief, would you like to give us just a brief background on what we're doing here?
Absolutely. So the fire department jointly owns two antique apparatus. They've had them well since nineteen eleven and nineteen twenty-one. One of those is being held, Mr. Hirschburner's garage here in downtown. The other one is being stored in our parkside facility, basically rotting away. Part of my goals is to clear out that storage unit area over there and make available to other city departments who really need the interior space. And when this came up in conversation on what to do, I approached Mr. Hirschburner, who was very interested in it going to the museum. But then as we dug into this and realized, you know, back in, I want to say sixty-seven, there was a resolution that gave joint ownership to both the Columbus Volunteer Fire Department and the city of Columbus. We figured it'd be a little difficult to navigate all of those things. So in response to that, it was my thought to sign our ownership over to the Legacy Group, which is the group that has been created since the disbandment of the volunteers. And part of their mission is to preserve the history of the fire department. These apparatus are gorgeous, they are great history to the city of Columbus and the fire department specifically. And we feel like it would be a really good thing for them to work on getting these apparatus either up and running or back in museum shape. And quite frankly, it's something that I just don't feel right coming and asking for money for when we don't have frontline apparatus that, you know, they all need repairs, too. So it's really one of those things that it's going to benefit us both, all parties, for them to take ownership of them completely and to work with Mr. Hirschburner to get them in the garage. And I know that they'll be in good hands. And Derek Gasman, the president of the Legacy Group, is here as well to, maybe he can provide some insight as to their plans and all of those things. But that's what we're looking to do, is really sign our ownership over and have them preserved outside of the storage facility.
Any questions? Sounds like a wonderful partnership that you're entering in, well, really not a partnership, getting it over to them to be able to take care of and move it forward. We appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Derek, did you want to say anything? I'm sorry, thank you. Hold your vote, hold your vote. You already did.
I live at nine seven six hundred and thirty-sixth Road, Silver Creek, Nebraska. Like Chief said, I'm the president of the Columbus Volunteer Fire Department Legacy Group. We intend on getting them into the museum. We may actually bounce them to the Carney Museum once they're in shape to do that. We're going to enter into some sort of a partnership with Dennis Hirschburner to help him run the museum. And then we will be working on some community betterment projects coming up in the near future, so should be good things to come. Want to thank the mayor, the city administrator, the chief, and the city attorney for putting all this together. The chief really put this on the forefront and headed this solution, so I appreciate it.
Are either of these apparatus operational at this time?
The twenty-three is. The nineteen eleven is going to need an engine. And that's going to take some doing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, Derek. All right, we had a motion and a second and a vote, motion passed. Thank you.
Item fourteen F, resolution number R two three dash one four seven, approving the inter-local cooperation agreement with Duncan Rural Fire District for providing emergency medical services.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R two three dash one four seven be adopted.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one four seven. I'll make a few comments on this and then anyone might have any questions. This and our next resolution, item fourteen G, refer to the termination of, or going, entering into an agreement. The first one here would be with Duncan Rural, where we will continue to provide EMS services to Duncan Rural for the next six months with an extension monthly thereafter as their goal is to become their own EMS service. So they believe they could be ready within six months. If they aren't quite there, we will continue for a few more months. So this is an agreement entered into, agreed upon, where we will continue to support them until that period. This will go into effect after a public hearing that they would hold. And I believe their public hearing was going to be on the sixteenth of November. We apologize that that public hearing didn't happen before, so this could all just be neat and clean. But we, nobody realized there was a need for a public hearing until about a week ago. And the public hearing needs to be noticed ten days prior and then held. And so the resolution was put together in an effort to get approval by us pending the public hearing with Duncan Rural. Any questions?
Just on service, would we send two vehicles over to Duncan every time on a call?
Bless you. I would say it depends. Currently, Duncan Fire is paged out with our crew. Recently, we have not been sending multiple apparatus, but I can't sit here and tell you that that would not ever happen.
Okay, I was curious.
Well, and I would remind council and the public that, you know, we have been, we have been providing service to Duncan Rural, and again, I'll repeat a lot of this on our next resolution, for Columbus Rural forever, at no cost to the city or the citizens of Columbus. So that is what brought this to the surface.
At no cost to Duncan.
And at no cost, I'm sorry, at no cost to Duncan or Columbus Rural. And that is what brought this to the surface and had us look into it and begin the discussions that have been going on for six months? A good, longer than that, almost a year. Well, when you're having fun, things just go right ahead. But we have come together very well. I want to give kudos to Duncan Rural and again, I will to Columbus Rural for working together to come to this solution that we have come to.
Is there an ultimate termination date for this agreement? Or is it month to month to month to month?
The, this agreement is entered into for six months after approval of their public hearing. It has a drop, if they would not have their public hearing, the drop dead date for Columbus is our next council meeting, November twentieth.
If they don't approve it.
If they don't approve it.
If it's approved, the end is twelve months, so it can go month to month for six additional months.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
And that was at their request as well, just to be clear. They requested a six-month agreement.
They asked for six months, we went back to them and said, we hope you're, we hope you're good with your aggressive movement, but we kind of question whether it can be done, so let's just make this month by month up to twelve total months.
Fine, thank you.
Yes. All right.
The only other thing is, I believe it's November thirteenth for both of them is their public hearings.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen G, resolution number R two three dash one four eight, approving the inter-local cooperation agreement with Columbus Rural Fire District for providing emergency medical services.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that resolution number R two three dash one four eight be adopted.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R two three dash one four eight. Again, very similar to the discussion I just gave you on the Duncan Rural Fire District. We've been in the same conversations with the Columbus Rural Fire District. The difference between that agreement and this is that we will continue to serve Columbus Rural. And we have entered into a financial agreement to do that. That agreement is for three years with annual renewals thereafter. And if at some point either party decides that's not where they want to be, they can give a hundred and eighty days' notice and get out of it. But at this point, we're, again, I commend Columbus Rural for working with us to get to this point. And we're happy with where we are and feel it's a good situation for both parties. Any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen H, resolution number R two three dash one four nine, approving the collective bargaining agreement with InterLocal Association of Firefighters Local Number with interlocal Association of Firefighters Local Number fifteen seventy five, effective November first two thousand twenty three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty three dash one four nine. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R two three dash one four nine. Any discussion? Just would let the public know, this is the collective bargaining agreement, which takes care of our firefighters. And it was negotiated between our firefighters and their people and our city staff. I believe people were happy with the outcome. Anybody have any questions? All right. Glad that we have this behind us and moving forward. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item, item fourteen I, resolution number R two three dash one five zero, approving the loan agreement with Granville Custom Homes Incorporated in the amount of one point two million dollars for workforce housing development using economic development plan funds as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Review Committee.
Who's got it?
Try.
No, I do not have it. Somebody else has it.
Well, let's try. Ordinance number fifteen A.
I'll read recommendation, but I don't have it. So whoever has it, just pass it down, I'll sign it then. Mr. Mayor, move for resolution, adoption of resolution number R two three dash one five zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one five zero. Any discussion? Yes, councilman.
Oh, it is me. I'm sorry.
Well, humor, it was humor on here, but it's in front of Beth, so it's okay.
Well, she's leaving, so you know, what can we say? Come on.
Well, that and, you must have really cut me off fast. Cause my screen just went out.
We have a councilman that has a comment too.
Yeah, so I won't be able to vote, I mean.
Do we know like the completion date? When that would be with approval?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right.
Yeah, I guess.
Do we know how much is in the eight forty fund that we can get out? Loan out.
Right now, there's available to loan out is about, around seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. So how do we come up with the rest?
Well, no, that's after this is approved.
Oh, after this?
That's left after this is approved.
All right. Do we know, is there, out of the eight pages of documents that I read about this loan, nowhere in there does it tell me the, the estimated completed cost? Do we know what that is? Are we financing that whole thing?
No, it's a portion of, it was, the total application to the C A R C was seven million for this project.
For twenty seven units? And to be completed by, do they have an estimated completed date?
They don't have a solid date of completion. We've asked that, but it was all.
Single and double.
And part of their funding is also the rural workforce housing funding that the Chamber of Commerce got in that last round. And I know that they have not received that disbursement yet, which is why they had a hard time committing to a timeline.
Okay.
Any other comments from the cha, the council? Have anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to the council, please?
Brett Combs, thirty nine thirty, Forty Eighth Avenue. So just on that economic development funds, that, where does that come from again? The funds for that?
It's fully funded by the voter approved one percent sales tax. So it's a portion of the one percent sales tax.
Okay, okay. And then, can anybody apply for that fund? Or is it, is it open to anybody?
It's open to anybody for specific types of activities. And all, the whole plan is on our website and it outlines what kinds of activities it's authorized to be used for. So basically, anything allows, by state statute, we allow here. And workforce housing is one of those things.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, who is the, like, the Citizen Advisory Committee? Is that a mayor appointed or?
The Citizens Advisory Review Committee is made up of citizens of Columbus. There's two bankers, a few three.
Who appoints that?
The mayor.
The mayor does.
Okay, okay. And I guess my last question would be, on that agreement, which is three years, if, if he backs, not backs out, but pays in full, let's say in a year, can he then at that time not be held to that twelve fifty one bedroom apartment and go ahead and raise him up then after that time?
As we, what we discussed was that af, for the length of the full term, even if he pays it off early, those are the rents he's supposed to charge.
But he's not bound by that or do you know?
No, he is bound by that.
He is bound for three years at those rent amounts?
Yes, that's what's written in here.
Cause I, I read over that and I just was a little confused on the, the language on that. I mean, I couldn't quite determine that for sure.
I mean, for the length of the agreement, it says in.
Well, and I think what he's getting at is if it, if it was paid off early, does the agreement cease?
Neil, do you want to weigh in on that?
No, they'll be doing a promissory note and a deed to trust as well. That's going to have the, the conditions on the rental amounts. There's going to be included with that as well. So there's going to be protections, protections there.
Okay. Yep. I didn't quite hear.
Oh, sorry. I said, there's going to be, as part of this, he's going to have to do, Granville's going to have to do a promissory note, which will have these conditions as part of it and also a deed to trust on the, the land that they own, which is put up as, as the collateral, so.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
So just for clarity, for the three-year term within that, those conditions, that the rent would stay as projected and written into the contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions regarding this? All right. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two three dash one five zero. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
I'm an aye.
Motion passes. All right, brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two three dash one nine, amending ordinance number two three dash one two that approved the special use permit for resource extraction to correct the legal description. Mr. Schilling isn't here, so if somebody, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the, or move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number two three dash one nine be read by number only. Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two three dash one nine by number only. Do I have a second? Oh, wait.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't hear anything. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two three dash one nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of an ordinance number two three dash one nine. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two three dash one nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their second reading.
Item sixteen A, ordinance number two three dash one eight, amending the city code to update the dangerous dog appeal process. This is the second reading. No motion is necessary. Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
All right. That will bring us up to our last item. But right before I hit the gavel, I would like to remind anyone in the audience and our council, we have a new fire truck sitting downstairs. Please take a few moments to look at this apparatus. I know everybody's pretty proud of it and it's here to take care of what we need when we need it. With that, meeting adjourned.